Good evening, everyone. We call this board meeting to order tonight, October the 11th. Member Bedora, if you would, lead us in the pledge.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Member Sikora, if you would read the affirmation of the mission statement.
Our mission is to empower all learners to be college and career-ready and to develop, grow, and achieve as productive citizens.
Thank you. And tonight, you might have noticed that we have a new introduction video to our school board meeting. This introduction was created by our Romeo Vale High School's Jack Randich. We thank you, Mr. Jack Randich. All right. Superintendent Mitchum, for the agenda.
Yes, Vice President Hanson, I'd like to ask that the board approve the agenda as presented.
Some vote, second.
Roll call vote?
Member Beduris?
Yes.
Member Campbell?
Yes.
Member Peril?
Yes.
Secretary Sikora?
Yes.
President Protem Hanson?
Yes.
Treasurer's report?
Treasurer's report 5.1 includes the monthlies from September 2016, as well as the interim obligation payments totaling $3,849,512.24 for your consideration and action.
Motion and second?
Some vote, second.
Roll call vote?
Member Beduris?
Yes.
Member Campbell?
Yes.
Member Peril?
Yes.
Secretary Sikora?
Yes.
President Protem Hanson?
Yes.
Treasurer's action report 5.2 includes the schedule of bills for October from seven separate funds. Total bills payable from those funds is $2,440,890.90, also for your action.
Some vote, second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote?
Member Beduris?
Yes.
Member Campbell?
Yes.
Member Peril?
Yes.
Secretary Sikora?
Yes.
President Protem Hanson?
Yes.
Treasurer's report 5.3 through 5.6 are information only. They're the typical reports that you receive every month. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Do you have any questions regarding those reports? All right. Consent agenda items.
Yes, I'd like to ask the board to approve consent agenda items 6.1 through 6.7. 6.1, Board Meeting Minutes, September 26, 2016. 6.2, Executive Session Meeting Minutes, September 26, 2016. 6.3, Gifts for Brooks Middle School, Lukanskik Middle School, and Jamie McGee Elementary and Oakview Elementary School. 6.4, Trips for Romeo Vale High School and Bolingbrook High School. 6.5, Student Activity Contract Approval Request, Jonas Salk Elementary with Interstate Studio. 6.6, Student Activity Contract Approval Request, Jonas Salk Elementary with Scholastic Book Fair. And 6.7, Student Activity Contract Approval Request, Lukanskik Middle School with TJ Spitzer Fundraising Company Incorporated.
Some vote, second.
Roll call vote?
Member Beduris?
Yes.
Member Campbell?
Yes.
Member Peril?
Yes.
Secretary Sikora?
Yes.
President Protem Hanson?
Yes.
Moving down to liaison reports. Any reports?
This afternoon, we had our Academic Curriculum Committee meeting, at which time we discussed the current evaluation procedure for all teachers in the district. We also discussed the math, Eureka Math, for the elementary buildings. And more of that will be discussed tonight, I believe, by Mr. Herter and Ms. Flores when they go over the Park results. But we had a very productive meeting this afternoon.
Any other reports for tonight? All right. Moving on down to audience participation. At this time, any anyone from the audience that'd like to stakeholder stakeholders or individuals present that would like to seeing none, hearing none, moving down. Action reports.
Yes, I'd like to ask the board to approve action report 10.1, 2017-2018 School Calendar. This calendar was presented as an information item at the August 22, 2016 board meeting. The draft calendar was posted online for staff and community review and input. A summary of feedback received is included. Recommendation for approval and adoption of the 2017-2018 School Calendar as presented. The calendar is subject to change pending ongoing union negotiations and/or state mandates. If further changes are required after this point, information will be brought forth at such time.
Some vote, second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote?
Member Beduris?
Yes.
Member Campbell?
Yes.
Member Peril?
Yes.
Secretary Sikora?
Yes.
President Protem Hanson?
Yes.
Action reports. Assistant Superintendent Gristafi?
Yes, first action report this evening is for the contract renewal for snow removal at Bolingbrook High School. We have contracted snow removal and salting at the high school since it opened in 2004. Our current contract is with Brancato Landscaping Incorporated. It was competitively awarded and bid and awarded in September 2015 and included a one-year agreement with two one-year extensions. Because rock salt commodity pricing has decreased from last year, they have agreed to reduce their salting rates as proposed in their original bid. They have provided excellent and reliable snow removal services for Bolingbrook High in this past winter, and we've been consistently pleased with their services. And so at this time, we are recommending approval of a one-year contract extension with Brancato Landscaping to provide snow removal and salting services at the Bolingbrook High School at a contract estimated, based on historical snow, snowfall totals of $40,700.
Some vote, second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Gristafi, when we bought the new trucks and the snow removal equipment back a few months ago, was none of that was designated for Bolingbrook High School?
Correct.
Okay.
Any other questions or discussions? All right, roll call vote?
Member Beduris?
Yes.
Member Campbell?
Yes.
Member Peril?
Yes.
Secretary Sikora?
Yes.
President Protem Hanson?
Yes.
Action report 12.2 is the approval recommendation for the second revision of our property lease for the administrative center relocation. We continue to negotiate with the landlord for the Normantown Strip Center. You did approve the first revision, I think, a month and a half ago. The primary difference with this second revision is the addition of a hard-cost build-out of $2,450,000 that would be absorbed by the landlord, and any excess costs would be would need to be covered by the school district. We are working with the trades, various trades, to bring bring in that construction budget as close to the number included in the contract as possible. The other primary change is an inclusion of an alternative refinancing, which would give us the option to refinance the landlord's mortgage with no impact of the landlord at a future date. So those two changes have been agreed to by the landlord, and therefore, we are asking you to approve them as part of the second revision of the property lease.
Motion and second?
And just for the record, it's subject to attorney approval. Attorney?
Some vote, second.
Any questions or discussions? Roll call vote?
Member Beduris?
Yes.
Member Campbell?
Yes.
Member Peril?
Yes.
Secretary Sikora?
Yes.
President Protem Hanson?
Yes.
Action reports?
Action report 13.1, this evening, we're seeking your approval for the consolidated action report for certified and classified personnel. We're seeking your approval on 26 items for certified personnel, 36 for classified personnel, two for classified administrative personnel, and one for certified administrative personnel.
Some vote, second.
Roll call vote?
Member Beduris?
Yes.
Member Campbell?
Yes.
Member Peril?
Yes.
Secretary Sikora?
Yes.
President Protem Hanson?
Yes.
And Superintendent Information Reports?
Yes, at this time, we have a our annual report concerning our student growth achievement as measured by Park, presented by Adam Herter and Karen Flores.
Good evening, Board of Education, Dr. Mitchum, community. This evening, we'd like to look at our Park results, standing for the partnership, for the assessment of readiness for college and careers. Just to provide some context, the Park assessment is now the Illinois State Accountability Assessment for all districts. Students in third grade through ninth grade took the assessment last spring.
That's all we get for you.
That worked. Sure. And just to clarify as well, the Park assessment last spring was actually the final administration of that assessment in high school. So going forward, it will just be third through eighth grade. But we will talk about some high school information this evening. So what we wanted to provide were three different perspectives on how to look at this data. We've had two years of Park now, so our students in spring of 2015, and then last year in spring of 2016. And so we can do a lot of different comparisons. And so this slide really describes the three types of comparisons we'd like to provide. The first is just grade level to grade level, so really showing, is this better, really showing how our grades did from one year to the next. So third graders, one year to third graders, the next. So not the same exact students. The second would be, how are we performing compared to achievement levels at the state average? And then the third, which is really the crucial piece that we look at internally to see what our impact is on our students over time, we call it cohort growth, which means we're going to look at students, the same students, how they did the first year on Park, and then the second year. So for example, the third graders on the first year of Park, how they did as fourth graders in the second year of Park, to really track. To us internally, that's where we fundamentally see the learning show up. But we wanted to show the first two as well, because that's what is provided to the community online, and also reveals some significant growth for the district. So when we look at the first perspective, which is just our our grade levels compared to our grade levels. So third grade, for example, on the first row in 2015, and third grade in 2016, all the way down through high school, the columns on the left relate to math, the columns on the right relate to ELA or English Language Arts. What you can see here is that we made gains in several areas in terms of how many of our students met or exceeded college and career readiness expectation levels at many of the grades, especially in math, when you look at it from perspective one. We'll talk in a minute about the third grade cohort as well, which is the first cohort of students to enter all-day kindergarten when the district began the all-day kindergarten program. Third grade, as of 2016, is those students' scores. So for example, in math, though that cohort actually went up by over 5% of students meeting or exceeding college and career readiness expectation levels. You'll notice as well that those gains in in math are maintained through middle school, especially in eighth grade, where there was significant growth. On the ELA side, there are some, obviously, what are shaded pink numbers. But like I just mentioned in the prior slide, we, again, those are not the same students. So those are different groups of students coming from one year to the next. And especially in ELA and math, when we get to later slides, and Karen will will go through, what did the results look like when it was the same cohort of students being monitored from one year to the next? So just to expound on the third grade comparison, the first year of Park, so 2014-15, those third grade students only went to kindergarten for a half day. And then the second year of Park, 2015-16, those third grade students attended kindergarten full day. So it gives us our first opportunity to really compare what is the impact of that program on the at the outset. And so what what was revealed is that we grew more than the state, minimally more than the state, both in math and English Language Arts, from the first year and the second year of those two different third grade groups. The state also went up significantly in math. What I do want to point out, what is exciting about this data is that, and those of you who have been here in the past, or when you've seen prior year presentations on Park data, there'd be consistency in the state where there would be jumps in the state data. And our data in elementary school would kind of be random. Some years, it would go up significantly, other years, it it just wouldn't have matched the state gains. And what what we really appreciated on first glance, looking at this data, is that we're right in line with those state average gains, meaning that the universal systems we put in place, both between all-day kindergarten and curricular-wise, are are paying off for us and giving us a trend line to our data that we had not had before. I'd also like to state, generally, what we're very excited to see with these students is how they perform as fourth graders on Park, because that will be the first time we've actually had a chance to do apples-to-apples comparisons of those students from third grade last year, and then taking Park as fourth graders this year. Did they maintain those trends and, you know, ideally exceed the state averages by even more? So switching to the second perspective, and you can see in the upper right-hand corner, there's a value view symbol and the state of Illinois being compared. And so what this is, is not growth in data, it's just the achievement level, average for value view and average for the state. And what it reveals is, in third through fifth grade, we are achieving below the state average. However, we are catching up to the state average in almost all of those areas. Especially, you can see that third grade math score, we are within one percentage point meeting or exceeding in math. And that's a definite celebration that we've seen in the data. The other enormous celebration here is the middle school and high school numbers compared to the state average. There's almost exclusively exceeding numbers there in the green compared to the state average on the same test, obviously at the same grade levels. Specifically, look at like eighth grade math, for example, that's that's an enormous number that reached the state average and now has significantly surpassed it. And what we've taken from this chart is that while we are still in the pink in the elementary grades, we are closing that gap, and that as students participate in our system, they're moving up to and beyond the state average, which shows that not only do we have a system that's vertically aligned from kindergarten up through high school, where we're working through the same standards and the same goals, the same types of learning, but that that actually has an impact, that the longer the students are in the system, the higher they are surpassing, in many cases, the state average. And so for unit district, that's that's a crucial piece of evidence to see.
Thanks, Adam. All right, I'm going to take you through what we look at the most. We look at this with a very keen eye, and this is an actual, this is a slide that we are very celebratory of. Because what this slide is going to show you is how did our kids, as Adam explained earlier, how did our kids do on Park when they were in third grade? And then how did those same groups of students do when they were in fourth grade and they took the Park assessment? So you can see that the sustainability of the growth that we're making as those kids transfer from one grade to the next, we're able to sustain. And we're able to sustain it in some levels at a pretty high increase. And so when we look at what we're trying to do is a unit district, with 21 buildings in our district, one of the challenges that we face is how do we kind of universalize some of what we know is in the best interests of students and what will really help be a resource in development for our teachers. And so when you see that we have greens, starting at the third grade level in one of our areas, and transferring all the way up to eighth grade, that really shows that the system is talking to each other, that the teachers are collaborating with each other. The days of only high school or middle school or elementary admin or teachers ever having an opportunity to come together, they're very integrated now. And while we'll still have separate development for teachers that need it for a content area or a grade level, we're also really taking the move to start to foster that collaboration in the whole vertical system. And this data really paints the picture that shows that we've been able to do that pretty effectively in terms of moving the needle for our kids. This next slide just basically takes the data that we saw on the slide prior, and then holds it up against the state. So you can see that when we look at the growth made within our cohorts, so again, same groups of kids transferring from one grade level to the next, you can see that while we do have lower growth in the state in some areas, the majority of the gains that we're making are higher than the state. So not only are we growing our kids and sustaining the growth that we're making, we're surpassing the growth that those cohorts are making at the state level as well. Do you guys, we're going to speak for a moment just about some of the initiatives at the elementary, middle, and high school level that are either impacting the data that we see, excuse me, or are in response to some of the data that we see. So at this time, if you'd like us to stop and answer questions on the data, or if we continue to go through and talk about what we're focusing on, you let us know.
I have a question. Could I have Adam explain, you know, the the results are wonderful, but you'd have to be amiss not to notice the fourth grade math results. And so he explained that to me earlier tonight. If he could explain that to the rest of the public?
Adam, is that in part of what you plan to present in terms of the response to the data? Was that part of that?
Yes, it could be included in that.
Okay.
Okay. So if you go to the next slide, please. So the state in math, from third to fourth grade, went down by 4%. District-wide, we went down by 14%. So the very high levels of achievement that cohort of students exhibited as third graders, we did not see transfer to their results as fourth graders. It definitely is an outlier in the data district-wide. And so of course, with with all of our numbers, both positive and negative, we look in much more depth by school, by different subgroups of students, what exactly is there is causing that number to be an outlier. And so in this case, we've identified a few options, the first being that the state went down pretty significantly as well. And while we went down more than the state, it was common for the Park assessment in general, was much more difficult at the fourth grade level. So it kind of became a perfect storm for our numbers. What we've specifically identified, though, is last year, as you know, was our first year using the Eureka Math curriculum universally in fourth grade. And while the curriculum in third and fifth grade led to positive results, in fourth grade, we noticed an issue with how it was implemented in the first year. And this is something I've talked to our teachers about, you know, as the as the prior math and science director, this is something I definitely own personally, and that our new math and science director is working extremely diligently to address this year. In implementing that program, a majority of the questions on the Park assessment related to fractions and those types of math skills and concepts. And we noticed that while the district average of fourth grade math was about 19% meeting or exceeding, we had teams of teachers in fourth grade who were as high as 37%. And then we had teams of teachers who were in the single digits. And so what we did is try to differentiate, what was the difference in the classrooms that were in single digits versus the classes, the the classrooms that doubled the district average? And the difference was that the curriculum was covered more quickly, and they got through these sections on fractions. And there's a school, their fourth grade team that I referenced, the 37%, that doubles up the district average and exceeds the state average by seven points. So the state average was 30%, and that school's was 37%. They covered the curriculum by getting through the fractions pieces. In the single digits, we wanted to just confirm that this this hypothesis was true. We did further research and found that indeed, those teachers were doing the curriculum with fidelity as well, but it took longer to implement, and they had spent more time on the front end, and had not covered a lot of those skills that were highly prioritized on the Park assessment. And so while that number is frankly unacceptable and something we are working significantly to address, we came away with two conclusions. Number one, is it is an outlier, that those students as fifth graders now will likely perform much higher. And our fourth graders this year should perform significantly higher than their their fourth grade counterparts last year as we address this issue. And the the positive end being that it is a logistical issue. It's not an issue with the skill level of our teachers, it's an issue with to what degree does our system support them in training to make sure we implement the program with fidelity, the way it's researched and intended to be implemented. And that's the work that's being done now by our curriculum staff in math, to meet with teachers at school, to specifically plan on how to cover the curriculum in its full detail and depth, in plenty of time for the students to take the assessment.
Thank you. That's the thing I want the public to know. We don't just let those results sit there and not take a look at them and do something about them. But you guys have gone a long ways to to figure out what the problem was and deal with it. Thank you.
And so just to quickly cover, we talked about the third to last bullet there of Eureka Math implementation just now. We also are have a heavy focus in elementary school now on learning the Common Core state standards in depth, from a combination of the curriculum resources we use, to the professional development being provided to teachers, to really focus on what we call here unwrapping those standards, to pull out the specific skills that students need to be able to perform. And that the greater our understanding is at at the district level, and building principal level, and teacher level, of what those skills are, the the better able kids will be to master those things. We've also come up with a model that is both used in Eureka Math and in our English Language Arts, referred to as the workshop model. And Lucy Colkins, in parentheses there, is just the name of the author of the program that we've are piloting with with many teachers, both for reading and writing as well. But the workshop model essentially allows students to be more autonomous for their learning. It involves direct instruction by the teacher, sort of that traditional lecture piece. But it goes beyond that as well, to allow the students to make choices within their learning, and it really emphasizes discussion and explanation between students amongst their peers and as a whole group. And it and our goal is that, not only for Park scores, obviously, just for life skills in general, but those are the kind of critical thinking and explanation skills that Park specifically does tests at a really rigorous level. And when students don't have the opportunity to practice that, it's more difficult for them to, you know, do that on an assessment or, you know, going forward into college and a career. The One-to-One Plus initiative relates to our increased usage of technology devices in elementary classrooms. I know we've had board presentations here in the past. What that will actually allow us to do is teachers to give feedback to students more quickly in real time using devices as we implement that program. And it allows students to interact with curricular resources that are researched based on the computer that we know have a really significant impact, one of those being Achieve 3,000, which I know is being utilized in the middle school, in English Language Arts classrooms, and is being piloted by our curriculum staff in fourth and fifth grade this year. And the goal of that program is to have students reading texts and literature that's nonfiction that is at a level of what their grade level expects them to read at. So really making sure that we don't sell anyone short, and that we're setting a really high expectation, really regardless of where an upper grade student, fourth and fifth grade, is reading, we're going to have them reading text at that level and support them in doing that. And that's another initiative that, you know, meets our district vision of really truly using grade-level material and rigorous expectations for students.
Some of what Adam spoke about is similar for middle school as well. We have been working with Achieve 3,000. We are adopted this year. And when we gave the presentation to the board last year, we were able to see some significant gains for how the students were performing and growing on our internal pre-depost assessment, and then the growth they were making with this resource as well. And what Adam said, I want to make sure I highlight, with Achieve 3,000, is that we have a lot of kids that come to have a lot of kids that come to us with different readiness levels, specifically with Achieve and reading. And what this resource will do is it will allow kids to access an article at their current readability level as an individual student, but then it will also provide an article at grade level for the teacher to take them through as a class. So it does two things. It helps develop their stamina and their just strength as a reader at an individual level, and then it also makes sure that we hold them accountable to the level that they have to read at at grade level. Middle school math block, this was a long time coming. This is the first year we have it. We kind of did something relatively similar last year where we had enhancement that was removed for reading support, and we focused solely on mathematics. What we did this year was with a specifically targeted group of kids, instead of a 44-minute period at the middle school level, they now have 88 minutes to receive mathematics instruction. And so we're very excited to continue to see what the data outputs in terms of the impact that has had, because when we looked at a few of the classrooms that were able to pilot this structure last year, they had significant gains with our kids in terms of how they were growing in math. Mathia X is also a new program. This is used for mathematics as well. What this serves as is a great platform. Oftentimes, what we're trying to foster in the classroom is not all the desks in a row, not universal instruction for all students throughout the entirety of the lesson. And so this is just one resource that the students can go on and work individually or with the teacher while the teacher is doing group work or some small instruction with other students. Great Books. This is something new as well. This is a resource for our English Language Arts classrooms. And what this does is provides additional tools to help our teachers look at not only what Adam focused on, or Adam spoke about in terms of understanding the standards. That's incredibly vital, but what we also need to make sure we do is equip our teachers with the resources that they need to make sure that they can actually hold our kids accountable instructionally to those standards. One-to-One Plus, that's often running at the middle school level. And again, in addition to the opportunities that Adam mentioned in the elementary slide, what else is an incredible opportunity is the ability for the kids to interact with one another, to collaborate with each other, and through different mediums as well, to provide each other feedback. And then Lucy Calkins is also something that we use heavily at the middle school for writing, and it's just another resource that we've put in the hands of our teachers after we've had a number of them pilot it and review it and say, yeah, this is what I need. At the high school level, I do want to point out that we do have Achieve 3000 in what we call our college prep reading classes, but I wanted to really highlight some of the changes that are going to come for high school, because here we are talking about Park, and we have Park no longer for high school. We had it for the last two years, but this year, the state decided in a very timely manner and fashion that they were going to remove it this year for high school. They also made the decision to change the state assessment from ACT to SAT. And so what we've done as a district to try and help, to try and help make sure that we have data points that let us know the levels of career and college readiness for our students, but also help our teachers become more aware of what this assessment is going to entail, expose our kids to the accountability that this assessment is going to hold them to. The district has secured what they call an SAT suite, so similar to what we've done in the past with our ePass. It would be Explore for eighth graders and ninth graders, it would be Plan for 10th graders, and it would be ACT for our 11th graders. It's the same thing, it's the same progression. So they have what they call a PSAT 8-9 that we're going to administer to our eighth and ninth graders this year. And then we're actually going to give a Practice SAT to our 10th and 11th graders on October 19th. So that's the direction that we're heading for high school. As a district, we talked earlier about the incredible celebration of the collaborative efforts that have been being done across the board. We still continue to look at visible learning. We use this as a compass to look at empirical research, to try and say, okay, we know that just about everything we do in the classroom is going to have an impact on kids, what's going to have the greatest impact? We are taking our building leaders through a Smart School Continuous Improvement Development this year, which will help them progress monitor and really, it will help them establish a goal and just very succinctly and very clearly monitor how we're doing against those goals with looking at different measures. And then Common Formative Assessment 2.0, this has been something that we began last year, and we have been in full swing this year. It's a development that's four days long, and it's spread out throughout the entirety of the year. And what it really does is it helps our teachers and our administrators just get some development on how do we take standards? And then how do we design assessments? And then how do we design learning tasks to put in front of our kids that we know are going to be a measure against those assessments, it's a measure against the standard? And so it's really kind of taking the theory of what we know we should do and putting it into practice so that our teachers feel equipped and they have the capacity to actually have an assessment structure within their classroom, within their PLC, within their grade level, that helps them say, first, what's the impact that I'm having on my kids? And two, what do I need to do to help close some of those instructional gaps that I'm still seeing when I look at the data? So that concludes our presentation for this evening. If there are any additional questions, we are more than happy to answer anything at this time.
Any questions? All right.
Well, before we end, I do just want to make sure that we pay attention to giving the credit due where it is due. We have building leaders, we have teachers, we have kids that are all working incredibly, incredibly hard, and this is a testament to their hard work.
Thank you to all of you that are putting your efforts behind that. It's also good to see the different programs that you have in place through each of the schools and the grade levels, and tying it back to the results. So that's really, really good. All right, on to our next information report.
Yes, wanted to make you aware of the need to replace the chiller at BJ Ward Elementary. Over this past summer, we had two of the three compressors fail, leaving just one that was, couldn't support the necessary cooling loads of the school. We did lease a temporary chiller through Train Mechanical Emergency Chiller Program, so they experienced no downtime in terms of their cooling needs. The existing chiller is about 18 years old and has been plagued with several repairs, particularly over the last, most recent years, including compressor repairs due to poor oil distribution and circuit board replacement. The BJ Ward chiller was on our five-year plan to replace, so purchasing and selling a new unit would be consistent with our long-range plan. We are looking at a nationally recognized process to allow us to receive the lowest price determined through a national bid and award selection process known as in U.S. communities. The estimated cost of new chiller, $310,000, which would include the engineering, purchase and installation of a new 225-ton chiller, associated piping, pumps, and billing automation. This will also include the removal and disposal of the existing chiller. We'll also be pursuing a Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity, or more commonly known as DECO, grant, which could provide upwards of $10,000 of state money offset. It is our desire to replace this chiller before this winter in preparation for the spring startup, and so we will be bringing in Action Report 2 over the next couple meetings. Any questions on that?
All right, moving on.
Next is an information report regarding lead testing implementation throughout the district. As you may be aware, national tension has been drawn quite a bit of public concern over the exposure to lead in pipes used for drinking water, in particular to the impact of populations at risk such as children and the elderly. In response to this, we will be testing all of our schools for lead, and not just our schools, all of our facilities. Given the significance of this undertaking, the district will follow appropriate guidelines and procedures, and will be transparent in all of its findings. Should any facility test result exceed the recommended level of lead, immediate steps will be taken to remove that source of drinking water from the general population. This may take the form of shutting off drinking fountains, removing drinking fixtures, and or providing approved filtration systems at drinking locations. Additionally, other sources of water, such as bottled water, will be provided for students and staff should any of these steps be implemented. In consultation with water testing experts, we will develop a protocol that would allow Value View to identify, manage, and respond to evidence of lead in our facilities, or in the absence of lead, the ability to implement a program using best practices and maintaining a lead-free environment. Immediate steps would be to hire a consultant to prepare a water analysis, utilizing industry standard measures and to determine a level of corrosion in the water and any presence of lead. We'll also implement daily flushing of specified plumbing fixtures, determining which fixtures are near the end of a supply line and flush the supply line for several minutes. If the presence of lead is found through testing at a particular school, we will inform parents and staff that levels of lead were found in a school water line, clearly outlining the steps to be taken to assure parents that no water from their domestic pipes will be used for drinking purposes. We will post signs that clearly state that the fixture is not to be used for drinking purposes. If a fixture has a sink that is also used for other purposes, clearly post signs that prohibit drinking the water from that fixture. Lastly, we'll provide other sources of water for the school throughout the day at necessary locations. And so again, it was our intent this evening to just kind of make you aware that we are undertaking this process. We are not turning a blind eye toward what could be a concern. We've got 15 of our 20 schools that were built prior to 1986 when the Lead Ban Act went into effect. But in looking at a very large school district, that being Chicago Public, and their results, they're in phase three of a multi-phase approach, I think they found lead in 3% of their fixtures. We anticipate about 18 fixtures per building being tested, and so with 3%, we're talking about maybe eight to 10 fixtures throughout the district in all 20 buildings. So again, optimistic that this is not a widespread concern, but nonetheless, I think it's a prudent, proactive approach that we need to take in order to ensure that we are clear of any lead in our drinking fountains.
So none of the buildings have been tested as of yet?
That's correct.
You received my email?
Dr. Mitchum did forward my email.
Okay, so she was misunderstanding that it had been and that there was something there, that's what I'm understanding about her?
When this became a major concern, we sought out the municipalities of Romeoville and Bolingbrook to understand what steps they had taken, and they have got all of their water reports posted online, have copies of those here, and they are clean. There are no instances of lead in Bolingbrook via American Water, which is their supplier. I think there was one instance in Romeoville, but it was, it did not require any sort of remediation, it was below the 15 parts per million.
Did you speak with that parent in particular?
I did not. I did not. That being said, that doesn't mean that we don't have lead in our buildings. Just because the water coming in is clean, so to speak, we still may have instances of lead, just like anybody might have instances of lead in their home. And so again, just trying to be proactive here so that we can address apparent concerns to make sure, and this is not a one-and-done either. This will be something that will be required to be monitored over time, and make sure that it doesn't occur or reoccur if it does occur. And so again, we're going into this with both eyes open, knowing that this is not an easy fix, but again, it's something that I think we need to do.
Thank you. Any other discussion or questions on that?
Yeah, I do have a question. So if there is a significant level of lead found in a particular building or multiple whatever, what do you do to correct the problem?
In talking with colleagues of various school districts, most are removing the affected fountains and replacing them with filtered fountains. That should be the primary result, if you will, or fix. Replacing all of the pipes in the building is obviously a very costly endeavor, and it's not something that anybody has really expected to do. We just want to make sure that any water that's being ingested, whether it be through cooking or through drinking, is lead-free. And so if it was determined that a particular faucet or building, a complete building, all those faucets would need to be taken offline, and we would either bring in water from a clean source, using some sort of sports jug, and we'd have to do that daily, or I've been talking with Megan Givens, our Director of Nutrition Services, we can have water drop shipped from our supplier, that's about three bucks a case. That has some logistical issues as well, as you can imagine, a large school such as Bolingbrook High or Independence in terms of the elementaries, you've got 750 to 800 bottles of water per day, and you know, are we going to be rationing it, where you get one bottle per day? Or, you know, there's a lot of questions logistically that we're going to need to answer. I think if experience shows us anything, and talking again with colleagues from districts that surround us, this has not been a widespread issue for them. And so I don't anticipate it's going to be a widespread issue for us. But as I said, nonetheless, we need to make sure we've got a clean bill of health.
And what's your plan for which schools to, the order in which you're going to do the schools?
I think our first plan of attack would be to take our buildings in order of age of our students, starting here at the Early Childhood Center, working our way up through the elementaries, also looking at the age of the buildings to see which are the oldest. And so I think using those two criteria would probably fashion our plan of action.
And when do you expect to start this?
As soon as possible. We do have a proposal, and we'd like to get a second proposal just to make sure we're getting a fair shake in terms of our testing, cost of our testing, and then start expeditiously. I would think they could do several buildings in a day. They typically come in first thing in the morning before school starts. That's the best way, I think, to receive a test to know if the water that's been stagnant sitting there overnight has any sort of, has any sort of lead exposure.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? All right, moving on down the agenda, anything from legal services?
No formal report.
Any threatening from AFT?
No report.
The Valley View Council? Or Valley View Personnel Council, Office Personnel?
No report.
Any old business? Any new business for the board? Any questions from the public regarding any actions taken by the board tonight? All right, how about announcements by the board? We're a quiet bunch tonight. All right, how about any announcements from the administration?
No announcements.
And any announcements by the public? Alrighty, then we have a motion to adjourn?
Someone, second?
Meeting adjourned.